All right, welcome everyone to tonight's council meeting. Thank you for all attending today. I'd like to acknowledge that this meeting is held on Bungala land and we give thanks for the use of this land. So as I said, welcome to all of my councillors and staff and members of the public for joining this ordinary council meeting on the 21st of February 2022. Before we begin, I'd just like to provide useful information for tonight's meeting to our community members attending this virtual council meeting. By joining us tonight using Microsoft Teams, we have provided you with a link to Microsoft's privacy statement on our agenda page. Tonight you are our guest and you will see this next to your name now that you've joined the meeting. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and by remaining online, you acknowledge that you're aware of the recording and accept this as a condition of connecting to the meeting. We share this recording along with the minutes to each meeting with the Whala community on our website and through our social media. As per local government meeting regulations, members of the gallery are not permitted to speak during a council meeting. So as our guest, your camera and microphone have been disabled. Any listed confidential items will be heard in Microsoft Teams breakout room away from the main virtual meeting room. Should a conflict of interest arise for a member of council, a separate Microsoft Teams breakout room has been created. Council meeting administrators will assist all meeting room transfers and also assist guests to exit the meeting if required. Once again, thank you for joining us for our live stream meeting. We ask for your patience as we continue to work through our technical challenges that may arise. I would like to now read the obituary notices for the past month and I would ask for a minute's silence for respect for these members of our public who've passed. Like to acknowledge Russell Stark, Kathleen Watts, Stephen Crawford, Theresa Kelly, Daphne Keshiki, Dolce Phyllis, Alan Case, Anthony Metcalf, Stephen McFarlane, Ian Cunningham and Maxine Eagle. Thank you councillors. Almighty God, we humbly beseech thee to grant thy blessings upon the works of this council to direct and prosper its deliberations to the advancement of this city and for the true and lasting welfare of the people of this municipality. Sorry, apologies for that. Item four, attendance record. Apologies, I think we have councillor Santuzzi at this stage, he may be able to join, we will advise as such. Leave of absences, we have nil. Item five, declarations of members' conflict of interests. Do any councillors have so and could they please let me know? Councillor Westerman?
Yeah, I have a conflict of interest for item 13.3.6 regarding the hotel development.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any other councillors?
Yeah.
Councillor Marshall?
Yes, Madam Mayor. In 13.3.2, which is the discussion regarding the rec centre. Now, I don't truly believe that I have a conflict of interest, even though I might be manager of the gym. I think the rec centre is a really important piece of infrastructure in this city. And I do believe wholly and solely that we need to put quite a bit of effort into that. I've actually had people approach me just recently, so I do have a number of questions to ask. So I would like to at least be able to participate. If you do not wish me to vote on anything, I'm happy not to vote. But I would like to raise some concerns that members of the community have passed on to me.
Okay, thank you councillor Marshall. Yes, I am comfortable with you participating in the discussion around that.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor.
I just want to know if you've got a camera, that you've been able to pop that on, if it's possible?
It is on.
Yeah?
It is actually on.
Okay, yeah, sorry, I couldn't see that on my screen. Thank you for that, sorry. Technical challenge, we'll be right. Okay, thank you. Is there no others? No, thank you councillors. Right, item 6.1, minutes of the previous meeting. Someone would like to move that recommendation? Councillor Stupos, thank you. Seconded, councillor Marshall, thank you. Right, there's no debate or discussion on that, no? I'll ask for a show of hands, all those in favour? Oh, David, sorry, apologies. David, councillor Knox, have you got a question? No, he doesn't, no. Okay, thank you. Right, apologies for that, we'll get through that. So, okay, is there no questions, I'll ask for a show of hands, all those in favour? Excellent, thank you. That's carried. Item 6.2, confirmation of the minutes of a special council meeting held on Monday, the 31st of January 2022. Councillor Knox, are you moving that recommendation? Thank you. Ask for a second please. Councillor Westerman, thank you. There's no questions or discussion? Thank you, ask for a show of hands, all those in favour? Thank you, that is carried. Okay, item 6.3, the minutes of the special council meeting held on Monday, the 7th of February 2022. Someone like to move those? Thank you councillor Marshall, thank you. And can I have a second please? Councillor Westerman, thank you. Is there any questions or discussions on those particular minutes? No, okay, thank you, I'll ask for a show of hands, all those in favour? Thank you councillors, that's carried. Thank you. Item seven, deputations and presentations, we have nil this evening. Item eight, petitions, there are also nil, thank you. Item nine, 9.1, the resubmission of the report from the former Witek building is there. And item 10, public question time, we do have no questions this evening, thank you. Item 11, elected members' activities, they are up on the screen. And we'll just scroll through those so that they can be seen, thank you, at reading pace. And I would ask if any councillors would like to make any comments or say anything about any of the activities they have attended or been part of in the last month. I'd like to hear from you, thank you. Anyone wants to comment on that? Okay, that's fine, thank you. I just wanted to make, perhaps I'll just mention, I think it's great to see the Australia Day Awards were a great success. Even, you know, with a bit of COVID challenging, I think that they were well appreciated by those members of our public and we appreciate the members of the public that received their citizenship on that day. And it was a lovely event to celebrate the successes of some special people in our city who have, who won the awards. And congratulations to, to all of our winners, well done. Okay, thank you councillors. Item 12, 12.1, the audit committee meetings, minutes, sorry, on page 20. Okay, there is a recommendation, councillor Stupos, are you moving that recommendation? Thank you, thank you. Would someone like to second those minutes being moved, please? Thank you councillor Pond, thank you. Right. We'll take them obviously as read, is there any questions or debate around those? What, no, take it as read, thank you. If that be the case, I'll ask for a show of hands, all those in favour? Thank you councillors, that is carried. Item 13, 13.1, the CEO's report, it is there in front of you. Justin, did you want to make any comment other than just take it as read and ask, wait for questions if needed?
Yes, thank you Mayor, yes, I'm happy to take as read. Just noting that the action items that are highlighted in yellow, we plan to take off the agenda as the next meeting, as they've ostensibly been completed. So just to bring that to councillors' awareness, but happy to respond to questions.
Deputy Mayor Stone, I'll take your question. Just need to get on speaker. Deputy Mayor, just put your microphone on please. Your question is important.
Thank you, sorry. At the risk of upsetting the apple cart, sorry, do we have any indication yet when that report will be available to council on the issues to do with the provision of pods on page 35? I asked the question in view of comments recently that makes me think that administration is unsure how they will operate, let alone the ongoing costs and even the suggestion that if we build it, they will come. Now, I'm genuinely concerned because of the ongoing costs and I would not want to see this go on. And in reference to if we build it, they will come, I do point out that while our Field of Dreams was a brilliant movie, it was fictitious and it involved ghosts. We're talking about real people, real issues and real rate payers' dollars. So I would hate to see this gradually be put off and off because it is too hard. So do we have any perhaps timeline as to when we might see the business case and ongoing costs? Thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor.
Yep, through the mayor, yes, we're working on that report as we, as we speak. Deputy Mayor, I anticipate that we'll workshop that with council probably on the 7th of March, noting that we've also got a broader conversation scheduled with the councillors about our building facilities across the city and how we deliver services and what service standard we provide. So it is a work in progress and we will be bringing that back to council shortly as part of the budget discussions.
Thank you. Any other questions Deputy Mayor?
Sorry, no Madam Mayor, just get my finger in the right spot.
Thank you, that's all right, councillor Knox, you're next.
Okay, my question relates to page 31. Where are we in the process of purchasing the pods? How long before we do own the pods? And there's reference to work on a lease to be undertaken, which particular lease is that one?
Through the mayor, so council resolved previously to purchase the pods, so we have purchased them. They are in our ownership and our, I won't say our possession, they're in our ownership, they're not in Whala as yet as they need to be fitted out before they are brought to Whala. The, sorry, the second part of the question, I just got a brief distraction.
It was around the lease, it was around the lease.
Yes, the, in relation to the lease, that is in relation to the lease for the cafe pod, which is being negotiated with the current cafe service provider. So Smokey Up Cuts noting that we had an arrangement in place for Smokey Up Cuts to use the former Beach Cafe as an interim measure pending the delivery and installation of the new cafe pod. So once that new cafe pod is available and a lease will be in place over the use of that facility.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Pond, please.
Yeah, I had two questions. Deputy Mayor, actually, I think you've covered the first one and that was regarding some costings for the pods, so that one's definitely covered. And I'd also like to ask, it's great to see that you've got a meeting planned with the Bungala representatives and I was just wondering who the representatives for Whala were.
Thank you councillor Pond. Justin? Just on, are you just on mute?
Yeah, I'm just trying to go to my diary to see who the representatives are, just bear with me. So I've got one email address, but that doesn't mean that that's a sole attendee for Jodie Croft.
Lovely, I was just making sure that we definitely had someone from Whala representing in the meeting, so thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Councillor Stupos? Just need to take your microphone off mute, thank you councillor.
Just to put a bit more clarity around, I believe the male component is going to be Roddy Wingfield, Rexy Wingfield, Barry Croft. And the female representatives are going to be Yvonne Abdullah, Helen Smith and I forgot the last lady that's on that crew.
Just to add to that, Arnie Yvonne and Roddy didn't know anything about the meeting today and Roddy actually has dialysis tomorrow, so there might be a few not attending.
Councillor Stupos, is there anything else? All right, thank you for that question councillor Pond, it's a very important question and it is good to see there was some representation there as you have requested, so thank you for that. Right, do we have any other questions from the CEO's report? I don't believe I can see that there are any, so thank you. So I'll now ask for a mover and a second for this report to get through please. Who would like to move this CEO's report? Thank you councillor Pond, has moved that? Can I have a second please? Councillor Knox, thank you. And now thank you, a show of hands, all those in favour? That's carried, thank you.
If I may Mayor?
Yes?
Sorry for the interruption, but I just wanted to let you know that I do have councillor Simpson online, albeit via my phone. Unfortunately, he's got a technical issue with being able to access via Teams. So if at any stage councillor Simpson wishes to say something, I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you for that. Right. Okay, thank you, so now we're at page 38, 13.2.1, the budget review for 2122 quarter two, the recommendation is there. Did any officers want to speak to this or we'll take this as read at this point? Okay, thank you. Did you have a question first, I'll allow that Deputy Mayor, or did you want to move that?
No, I've just got two little questions, I think they're little Madam Mayor. On page 44, item five, the reference to $147,000 for building renewal works at Tandera. Although it's been pushed back to 2223, I presume we won't be spending that until we've decided on the future of the building. And my second question, the next item, item six, $58,000 for the fit out of the old library building also put back to 2223. May I ask what fit out? Because my understanding is since the art gallery idea was dropped, it's basically sat in a bones and used occasionally. And so if we're fitting out, does that require a council decision on what we're using the building for?
Yep, okay, I'll ask Grant to, or Justin, sorry, thank you Justin, just speak to that, thank you.
I'll respond, thank you Mayor. We are currently reviewing all of council's buildings, both those that are utilised by council, those that are utilised by community groups to, as part of the broader review of building facilities that I mentioned previously. The reason these two items have been put back is that we need to have the discussion together with the council to agree on the service levels and which facilities are to be used to deliver which services. And as I mentioned before, that workshop we're looking to do as part of the budget process, I think on the 7th of March at the latest. So the reason for the deferral is just to push the expenditure back and we won't be planning to do any spend on those buildings until we've had that discussion with council.
Thanks. You happy with that response? Thank you Deputy.
Yeah, okay.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, all right, I will take that as being read and understood now, so I'd ask for a mover and a second please for this report. Councillor Knox has moved that, thank you. A second to councillor Stupos, thank you for that. Right, I'll ask for a show of hands, all those in favour? That's carried, thank you. Okay, page 50, 13.2.2, the review of the financial policies. Okay, I would take this as being read, if there are any questions, I will allow them. Okay, so we don't have any questions from the councillors, so I'd ask for a mover and a second please for this report, thank you. Could I have a councillor move this report please? Thank you councillor Westerman, a second please. Councillor Marshall, thank you, thank you. All right, then I'll now ask for a show of hands, all those in favour? Thank you, that has been carried. Page 92, 13.2.3. So I would ask that this, I'll take this report as being read, if there are any questions, I can allow that. You've had discussions around this, so there are none. Okay, so I'd ask for a mover of this report, the recommendation that you note, the report on the implementation of the local government reforms. Councillor Knox, thank you, that's been moved, I think councillor Stupos was second, thank you. Thank you, so I'll ask for a show of hands, all those in favour? Excellent, thank you, it's carried. Right. Page 96, the, it's 13.2.4, the 2122 mid-year report. So councillor, allow question, thank you councillor Pond.
Yes, I have one question regarding the club rooms at Jubilee Park. I've noticed that it's been put off for a little while, just wondering if we have a predicted or expected start and finish date for that?
Thank you. Justin, would you like to respond to that?
I might defer to one of the directors because I don't have the answer to that question.
I'm happy to answer that one, just there. Just to check, Tammy, so that's the unisex change rooms at Jubilee Park is the one we're looking at?
Yes, that's right.
Yep, so we have awarded the tender for the demolition of the softball club rooms and we expect that that will take place in March. We are close to going out to the market for contracting out the building of the new unisex change rooms. We expect that will be out in March, April to close in June for work to start in July and work to be completed by Christmas is our aim.
Lovely, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor? Sorry, you're on mute Deputy Mayor. Thank you.
I might wish that. I've got several questions or comments, so if I may, on page 100, the last item, project reporting, it does state there that due to the very high workload in this year's capital programme, some works have been deferred to later years, which I accept. My concern is that that supports my ongoing concerns that we are spreading ourselves both financially and resources too thinly and it's something we do have to really watch, so that's just a comment. On page 103, our economy, prosperous, my question is in regards to the reference to the childcare centre and the airport. What context can you explain or can somebody explain at risk? What is the context there that we're going to go bust, we're going to lose money? It just says in the tracking column there, at risk, so what does that really mean?
Through there, did you want me to answer that one?
Thank you.
Yeah, so in line with the comments there, it's more around that we just need to review the airport modelling going forward, probably as part of the budget process. We have seen, as we know, some, some increases there with project costs that weren't expected. Obviously, one of the things we're doing to mitigate that is seeking extra grant funding to mitigate that cost. But we will need to update our airport modelling around how that ends up looking and that'll be part of the budget discussions. The childcare centre itself is on track for original projections.
Thank you for that. My next question, on page 104, our leadership, the customer experience. Now, unless I'm on the wrong track, I'm concerned that it's going to take us two to three years to improve our customer experience. I don't believe private enterprise would accept that as a goal. Surely, we can act faster despite our workload to improve our customer experience, which to me is also customer service, customer satisfaction, two to three years to me is far too long and I would hope that we could see something a bit different there. Oh, sorry, I'm just going back to page 102, our places activated. Again, in reference to the complete scoping of potential upgrades to facilities at Memorial Oval, the future funding bins. But I ask, what facilities are we actually proposing? Because I think we also need to remember, and this will have to be part of the PR job, many of our residents will come, that'll come as a surprise because they have seen significant upgrades over the years and for us to now say, we're looking for grant funding for more facilities, what are those facilities that we're looking at?
I'll provide an initial response through the chair Mayor, if that's okay. So in relation to Memorial Oval, it's the same comments as I made before, that we're about to have a workshop discussion with councillors. When we talk about Memorial Oval, it comes to the question of what service level do we want to provide? And consequently, what facilities do we provide at that site? There's been some discussion for some time about having at least two ovals that can accommodate larger scale games. So obviously we've upgraded Bennett Oval, but grandstand facilities, multisexed or unisexed change facilities and the like are some of the things that could and may be needed in Memorial Oval, depending on what service level council decides to put in place for that facility. So we'll again workshop that very shortly with councillors to agree on what it is that we believe needs to be in place.
Thank you for that. At the time, we need to make sure the community is aware that these are add-ons. And my other two questions, I'll forget about right now, thank you. Thank you Madam Mayor.
Thank you Deputy.
I'll push the mute button.
No, they're very, thank you for those good questions, thank you very much. Okay. Are there any other questions from other councillors? Okay, thank you, I'll ask for a mover please for this recommendation. Councillor Knox has moved. Councillor Knox is moving that, thank you. With a second please. Councillor, sorry, Deputy Stone, thank you, thank you. Councillor Pond, you were almost there. So I'd now ask for a show of hands, all those in favour? Thanks, that's carried. Right. Page one one three, the monthly budget report for January twenty twenty-two. I will take that has been read. Are there any questions? No, okay, thank you. I'll ask for a mover for that recommendation, thank you. Councillor Stupos, thank you. Councillor Pond has seconded that, thank you. Thank you. And I'll ask for a show of hands, all those in favour? That's carried. Thank you. Okay. We will now go to page one, two, three. Thirteen point two point six, the annual review of confidential orders. Now. We will move this recommendation excluding item sixty-two, which was a conflict of interest for councillor Westerman. Once we have got through the bulk of this confidential orders, then we will ask for councillor Westerman, she will be taken out into a into another room, and then we will, I'll ask for a mover in a second to review item sixty-two on its own, okay? Thank you. So I, we take this as being read and understood, but I will allow any questions if need be from a councillor's to staff prior. Councillor Knox.
One question. Relates to page one thirty-one and relates to the CEO's contract. I can't see for the life of me why that needs to be kept confidential, given that anybody can walk in from the street and ask to see the register of salaries and interests and see just exactly how much is paid and the extras that are paid, et cetera. So I can't see the reason why that's kept in confidential.
If I may, Mayor, could I get Cathy Jarrett to respond to that question, please?
Councillor Knox, can you please state the item and the page that you're referring to, please?
It's page one thirty-one. Item number twenty.
Thank you. One thirty-one, item twenty. I'll hand over to Cat.
Yes, thank you. Through the Mayor, that item relates to the previous chief executive officer and not the current chief executive officer. And we will be seeking to consult with the previous chief executive officer in terms of getting that documentation released. But at this point in time, we haven't received that information from the previous chief executive officer, so we're recommending that the item remain confidential, but that council delegates the power to release this item to the chief executive officer following our consultation with a former CEO.
Thank you for that, Cathy. Councillor Knox?
Look, I'll leave it at that, but I mean, I just, I just think it's a nonsense when all the information that is in that is available to the public to see if they want to come in and ask for it over the front counter in the council office, so. Yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, Cathy, did you want to respond to that?
The detailed information of the employment agreement is not actually available on, for public inspection. Certainly, the salaries registered does include details of the remuneration, but it does not include details of the actual employment agreement itself.
Okay, thank you Cathy. Right, thank you. Councillor Knox, satisfied with that to this day, to this point? Yeah. Okay. Right, any other questions from the councillors, please, if there are? Can you please let me know? Okay. Is there a none? So we will now obviously move the confidential orders excluding item sixty-two. There's a recommendation there. I'd seek someone to move that recommendation, please. Councillor Stupos, thank you for moving that. Councillor, Deputy Mayor, are you seconding that one? Thank you, thank you. So I'll ask for a show of hands, all those in favour? Excellent, thank you, that's carried. Right, now I will ask for councillor Westerman, she will leave the meeting for this next part of this recommendation to be moved, so we'll just wait a moment for that to occur. Thank you. Yep, so it's almost occurred, thank you, yes. I have confirmation from staff that that has occurred. Thank you. So councillor Westman is now in a waiting room while we look at this next item. So I'd like a mover and a second to address the item sixty-two separately from the rest of the confidential orders. Can I have a mover, please? Councillor Stupos? And and a second. And councillor Marshall, thank you for that, second to that, thank you. I'll take that as read. Understood, thank you. Right, I'll ask for a show of hands, all those in favour? Thank you, that's carried. Thank you. Excellent. Now, we will just wait for a moment while we invite councillor Westman back into the meeting. And staff will advise me when that has occurred, just takes a moment. Just waiting for technology to invite councillor Westman back into the meeting, won't be long. Excellent, thank you. Councillor Westman has rejoined the meeting. Welcome back councillor Westman. Thank you. Okay, so now we go to page one four one. Item thirteen point two point seven. For approval of the Wyler council's draft animal management plan for twenty-two to twenty-seven to be sent to the dog and cat management board for review and released for public consultation. Now, I'll just remind the councillors that this is a separate piece of work to the consultation process, which is currently underway with the public, so they're not the same. So we are just voting on the moment, on the moment on this particular animal management plan. Do you understand? It is separate to the consultation process about dogs off leads at the moment, that's a separate matter. Okay? Right, so I will allow if there are any questions, I think I'll take this as read. So I can see no show of hands, fine, thank you. So I will look for a councillor to record, to move this recommendation. Can I please have a councillor move that, sorry? Okay, councillor Marshall, thank you. Councillor Pond, seconded, thank you. Thank you very much. Show of hands from councillors, thank you. That's approved, that gets carried, thank you. Right. Okay, page one six six, thirteen point three point one. So it's the endorsement of the memorial policy for community consultation. Take it as read, thank you. A councillor, oh sorry, deputy, Mayor?
Just a little comment, I can understand why we've chosen the materials we have for those bench seats. But just looking at the photo, it just looks a bit daggy to me.
Would someone like?
The sleepers, I mean, I presume the sleepers haven't been dressed, and then you've got bare concrete. For a memorial, I'm not saying we spent thousands, that's for sure, it just looked a bit like a backyard job. Well, and I say that with the greatest respect for those that are behind it.
Thank you. Any other questions, deputy? Or comments?
No, Madam Mayor, no, not quite.
Thank you. Right, I will get another question and I will ask a response from staff. Councillor Knox?
I agree with Deputy Mayor Stone's comments, it doesn't look great to me. But I had an approach from a resident probably six months or more ago, and they wanted to put a memorial in to recognise the deaths of both their parents. But they wanted to pay for the whole thing, not, not part of the thing. And I did refer to the staff, so I'd like to know that there is a provision in this whole thing. But if somebody wants to donate a full seat or whatever, then they can do that and have exclusive rights to the naming of it.
Jay, Justin, are you able to respond, or Jade, please?
I can take those comments on notice. I guess we will have to have a framework either way of how many bench seats we want down there on the foreshore and whereabouts we'd like them. And we can look at some design options so that it's more than one option. We can go away and do more work in that space if you'd like this evening.
Can I just add something else? It doesn't need to necessarily be the foreshore. For example, the people I was speaking to were quite interested in putting a bench up at Flinders Lookout.
So we can look at all locations in the city. I guess there'll always be a cap as to where they go and what aesthetic they take. It's always difficult. The other point to note in this space is that it can get out of hand pretty quickly. And, and, and the personal tastes of many. Another consideration is to incorporate a memorial space within the cemetery. We can bring you some information on councils around the peninsula that have done so. So that's often, it functions the same way, but it's, it's not. It can be quite artistically designed, so there's other options there. But we'll, we'll take direction from, from you all tonight.
Right, thank you for that Jade. So with those, with that feedback from councillors, and I see that you understand that it's a bit more detail in those particular areas, it will come back to council, but more detail around the specifics, so we'll wait to hear back from you on that Jade, and obviously. Right, so overall, the recommendation is there, so I think that I'm looking for someone to move that. Is that councillor Marshall?
Yeah, yes, it is Madam Mayor, but I'd just like to ask a question.
Oh, sorry, apologies. Yes, go straight ahead, sorry.
It's actually about the recommendation. Yes, yes, so it does have amendments if required. Just further on to what Jade was saying and what, yeah, I, I think that this could very easily get out of hand, and I think we need to be totally in control of this. I much prefer the option that Jade just presented about having an area, say, within the cemetery grounds that could be artistic. I think there's more seating needed there anyway. And we really need to be in control. So, back to that question, so does number one, like with an amendment, does that mean saying something like, a space will be designated by council at a future date or something like that? Is that what that is meant to be referring to, amendments?
I'm, I'm happy to, to take the policy away and incorporate a number of design options and locations around the city, including the cemetery. And we could possibly look at a clause as such, that, so we might have a series of designs available for choice and locations, but we don't know in the policy that, that council reserves the right at any time to cap the benches in a certain locality. And, and, and as such time as that cap is reached, we wouldn't consider any further applications. Does that seem fair and reasonable?
Yes.
Um, okay. I'm not sure what councillors would agree with, but I think we probably should adjourn this at this point and get some more detail around the conversations that you've had with the staff, and I think that would be best for both sides. So I'm happy to get some commentary around that movement, thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, basically, that's what I was going to say. This needs to come back and having adjourned, that we don't have a motion at the moment.
Are you happy to move that adjournment, deputy?
Yes, certainly, Madam Mayor.
Are councillors happy, comfortable with that at this point?
Yes.
Okay, can I have a second please? Councillor Pond, thank you. Thank you. No, that was a really good discussion, so I'll ask for a show of hands for that to occur, thank you. Thank you, that's carried. Yeah, no, I think that's the right move at this point, so I appreciate the report that has been presented by staff and, and obviously with the councillor's input, we're going to get some more detail around that, and the feedback is excellent, so it is an important report and we need to get it right. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we are now at page one seven four, thank you, item thirteen point three point two, the Wyler Recreation Centre. So in regards to this, councillor Marshall did flag that she was happy to be part of the discussion, and I'm allowing that. In regards to when the voting is considered, we'll have her moved into a breakout room, councillor Marshall, just when the voting has occurred, okay?
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you for that. Okay, so I think in regards to this, this conversation could have a bit of discussion around it. Did, did any of this, Justin, did you want to speak to this prior?
Just to foreshadow for councillors that we do have an additional two recommendations to accompany what was printed in the, the, the public agenda. We thought that the addition of recommendation two and three, which is on your screen, so two, which is that noting that having adopted option two, that that be designed to be delivered in stages and depending on the availability of funds or grant funding and priorities that the, the upgrades will be undertaken over time. And that's the, note that the next steps for the master plan includes community consultation in relation to the adoption of option two as the preferred option, so happy to respond to any questions that councillors have, but just wanted to confirm that we've added those extra two recommendations for consideration.
Okay, thanks, Justin. I think that they're important to extra additions to that particular recommendation. Councillor Marshall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's, I, I think this is really, really important, the recreation centre. We all know that it's an aging infrastructure. And obviously, a lot of money needs to be spent on it to get it up to today's standards. And there's been ongoing issues for a very long time. One of them being obviously filtration, and this is where I've certainly had comments. And, and look, to be perfectly honest, this has gone back for probably the best part of twenty years about pool cleanliness. So I am assuming that this has got to do with aging infrastructure, and I think it needs to be a priority. And one of my concerns is that while we focus a lot on the foreshore master plan and what we want to do with water parks and things like that, I just don't want us to take, I want these projects to be running side by side so that we are
So that we are doing the foreshore and we're doing this at the same time, because this is critical infrastructure. Um another, another question that's been, well, I had a meeting with somebody on Friday afternoon. Um who was really concerned that when she took her grandchildren to the centre. That it was closed due to manager lunch. Now, she then ended up speaking to the regional manager about this. And and I know within the industry, it's really hard to get qualified to recruit people. And and this is a problem that's happening out there. So there's intermittent pool closures happening. Um at very short notice, and that does include classes and just people going there for swimming. Um the person that was there was actually offered her to and the grandchildren to use the recreation, you know, the hall. Um and just sort of play a bit of ball and things like that, because obviously, you know, they're already there. Um but it it is about, and I and I think you've probably had some discussions with the the regional manager around. You know, how we, you know, along with the infrastructure side of it, how can we manage the actual. Um business side of it to make sure that the community is not being. Uh is is not being put, well, obviously, it's not going to be put at risk because if if they haven't got staff, then they're not opening those areas. But, you know, how do we get around those issues as well? Because it's really a two-fold question. And as the infrastructure declines, then obviously things can't be open like the hydrotherapy pool, et cetera. And and this is, this means a big section of the community are being impacted negatively. Because they haven't got access to rehab facilities and um, you know, and disability access. You know, there's a lot that's going on out there and I just want us to make sure that we're putting a really high priority. On making sure that this is, you know, this is really top of our priorities. Because this is an important piece of infrastructure to the whole community. Um and I just want to make sure that we're really keeping in mind that this needs to be. Uh that that it needs to be put right up the top of the list. Thank you.
Very, very good points there, councillor Marshall. Thank you for that. Councillor, sorry, Justin would like to to speak. Thank you, Justin.
Yeah, if I can, mayor, free, free, mayor, thank you. Um just wanted to confirm that the purpose of this report is in relation to. The um adoption of a preferred option for the upgrade of the Wala Recreation Centre. Um what is not up for discussion today is the timing of when this works will be done. Or what priority this project has in relation to other projects that is part of the budget and annual business plan deliberations. Um and the the other matters that councillor Marshall raised. Um are to do with operational and resourcing of the centre, which again is not the subject of this report. So whilst I made note of those comments, I just wanted to confirm with councillors that. The intention of this report is to agree on what type of service level do you want to provide in terms of facility? Uh you've got two options before you, um and then the those other matters in terms of timing. Will be considered as part of the budget and long-term financial planning processes.
Councillor Knox?
Okay, my my, look, my comment is, it's a big project, this. I would rather have a bit more time to have a look through it and more time for discussion. I would prefer that it went through a workshop before we actually made a decision on what's the preferred option. I mean, I've got quite a few questions I'd like to raise, but I think they'd be better in a workshop situation.
Thank you, Justin.
Just wanted to let you know that councillor Simpson would like to make a comment, please, mayor.
Well, it's the police you're saying, it's a long-term project, I'm a bit concerned about the the dollars, the cents. If we've got a budget on section two of ten million dollars, that's maybe seventeen million dollars or eighteen million dollars in three years' time. So we're under budget. With that, by task practice, you look at everything we've done in the past, we've had quotes for this, quotes for that, and they've been short by heaps. That that ten million dollar project will be fifty or sixty or seventy shortly.
Yep, thank you. Um just wanted to check, mayor, could you hear councillor Simpson, okay?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Knox?
I've made my point, I don't think we should be deciding on it tonight, I think it needs to go to a workshop.
Right, councillors, anyone else got any comments around councillor Knox's request as well? Councillor, deputy mayor?
Yep, I'd be quite happy for it to go to a workshop, yes, instead of just accepting it all tonight, if there's benefits to be gained.
Councillor Pond?
Yeah, I absolutely agree with the workshop. I think this is a bigger project and um. Having us all together to nut it out, I think would be very beneficial.
Okay, um would that require a formal motion? Councillor Knox, are you happy to do that?
I've already spoken, so I can't move a formal motion.
Okay, then, um just just one more. Okay, sorry, I'm here for that. Um so what I need to do is ask for someone to, if they would like to move a formal motion to have this item adjourned. If that's possible?
Yeah, councillor Simpson would like to move a formal motion, mayor, to defer the item to a future workshop.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Can I have a second please? Councillor Westerman, thank you. Okay, put that to the vote. All those in favour? Okay, thank you. It's carried. Okay, and as we were only having a, we were putting it to a workshop. Um that's why councillor Marshall was not removed into the waiting room, so thank you for that. Okay, thank you councillors, that was a good discussion and it is a very important topic. And yes, I think a workshop would be, would be, would be very good. Okay, page two one eight. Uh city infrastructure, thirteen point four point one, the temporary licence for car parking at Jubilee Park. Are you moving that councillor Pond?
I actually have a question.
Oh, our question.
Uh just one around security. Um we, there's a lot of hooning going on at Jubilee Park. Um and I think fantastic that more people are utilising such a great facility. But I'm just inquiring whether security is still going to be locking the gates each night? And if that will impact on the car parking idea?
Uh through the mayor, um the gates, at this stage, our interpretation is that the gates will be locked by security as normal. Uh what we'll do is that there will be two change over times and. Uh security will open the gates an hour before and lock them again an hour after the buses arrive or or leave. Um also, we are looking at providing a key to the, to Golding who'll be managing the site. So that if any of that does fall through, then there is someone able to open up the gates. But in my mind at the moment, the gates will be locked overnight as normal. Uh and security and or Goldings would have a key to open it when the bus arrives.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Pond. Any other questions from councillors in regards to this matter report? I see there are none. Okay, well then I would ask for someone to move this recommendation, councillor, deputy mayor, thank you. Stone, seconded councillor Knox, thank you. Ask for a show of hands, all those in favour? Let's carry. Thank you. Okay, and page two two two. Uh my list of engagements are there, I'll take them as read. If there are any other questions from them, welcome from councillors. No, there are none. Okay, thank you. Well, I'll ask someone to move that recommendation, please. Deputy mayor, thank you. Second councillor Westerman, thank you. Do you show of hands, all those in favour? Thank you, that's carried. Okay, right, so page two two six, item fifteen notices or motion, there are nil. Item sixteen, questions on notice, there are nil. Item seventeen, questions without notice. Uh councillor Marshall?
Thank you, madam mayor. Um this one's probably directed to Kristin because I'm I'm sure that the CEO would have passed this on to you. Um so I did write about my concerns about Wall Street about a week ago. And I'm just following up just to see, for those who are not aware, recently Wall Street's had a lot of. Um a lot of guttering works done and large storm drains put in in various parts along the street. Which have now created a couple of very big dips. Um I've actually got photographic evidence of some cars that have been damaged. Uh when they've not realised about these new drains and have suffered damage to the front of their cars. Um I noticed there's been a temporary thirty K sign put up. But I would like to know when this road is going to be sealed. There are gaps along the hallway of the road. There are, there are large areas that have got dips in them um from all of the roadworks before. It's a major thoroughfare, obviously with the two schools. Um and also, a lot of traffic comes from Patterson Street and goes down Wall Street. So any time of the day or night and you're hearing cars, you're basically being lifted into the air at the moment. So I'd really like to know what are the plans for Wall Street and the finishing off of the whole street, please? That's my first question, got a few others.
Uh thank you through the mayor. Um we expect that work will start on the stormwater. And which is the first job, we're in our January February, in early March. And we expect the job will take between six to eight weeks. It is extensive work that we're doing there. Um it's been a notorious area for stormwater and stormwater collection. Uh it's difficult for the residents and it's difficult because a lot of the water pools in and around the school. Uh in undertaking a lot of the survey work, we, the the roads there have got some huge canbers on them. Um there's large crowns on the road, which makes the job more difficult. Uh and also the material that we're dealing with there is 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 quite rocky as opposed to clay. So this is a very technical and difficult job that we're undertaking. We went out to the market three times seeking contractors to do the work. In the first instance, we went out with each of the different stages available for tender. Um but no one put their hand up and then we went out with the whole job from go to woe as a as a whole tender. And we weren't able to attract any applicants that way either. Um we're at the point now where council has started the works and Berubi will be finishing the works. And they are the only contractor that we were able to get to to tackle this job. So I think a combination of the amount of civil work happening across the state at the moment. And the difficulties with this particular project has made it hard. Um we expect to start in early March and be finished within six to eight weeks.
So just for clarification, Kristin, so you, so there's more more drainage to be put in then? Because there's already been three major drainage pipes put down at the top, at both ends of the street. And in the middle next to the school and also in the school grounds. So is there, is there more still to come?
I'm aware of the drainage going into the school. Um if we've completed the drainage works on the streets. Then um then maybe I am out of touch with that one, but.
There's there's definitely been, obviously on on the street, so I've been watching it. So it's definitely been drainage being put in three places, four if you include the school.
Okay, I would need to get an update then on where that project is at, but my understanding was there was still more drainage to go into that area.
Okay. Um also too, there's a large subsidence in the Wall Street car park. Um on the corner of the the house, what's actually the shed at the back, the back end. Um but it's a very, very large pothole and it's quite deep. Um it came away probably just after the last lot of rain, but it is large and there is weed growing into it. So I'm just concerned because that car park has heavy use for kids and for adults at the school. That either a car's going to go down it, because it's that large, or someone's going to really hurt themselves. Um not realising that it's there, particularly if they're walking through there, not during the daytime. So that that really needs to be looked at as well.
Thank you councillor Marshall. Can I just check where the the location of that one?
Okay, so it's in the Wall Street car park. Uh and it's down the end to, further towards where the car park then goes into sort of just the general area with the back of the shops. But it's actually right on the corner where the big shed is on that property at number fourteen, I guess it's fourteen rooms.
Yes, yeah, gotcha.
Yeah, yeah, so that one. Um next question um is about the, now I noticed that posters, large posters. Uh are going up in different shops in the city plaza. I do believe from my intel that there's about thirty of those to go into vacant shops. Um they're quite large and obviously they're for tourism purposes and I know that there's a collaboration between. Um council and the Chamber of Commerce. I would just like to know how much that's costing. Um and also too, there there just wasn't any communication to the traders about that that was happening. Um so just just to, just to note that it would be good, just to keep the traders informed. Um I'm not against the project, but I would like to know also how much it is costing to put those posters in, please?
Uh through the mayor, um it's a Wala Business and Tourism Initiative. Um so they're, they're actually doing all the work in terms of sourcing images, contacting business owners to arrange installation of the signs and the like. Uh so council is essentially supporting with a financial contribution. I think it was fifteen hundred dollars off the top of my head, but I'm happy to. Um provide councillors with confirmation of what the, what that investment is.
Thanks, Justin. Um now, the other one is to do with meetings being streamed and being. Um uh while we're not meeting in the chamber and I've noticed that we've had communications for future meetings to be this way. Um can I just make a suggestion? Um as COVID policies are relaxing everywhere these days. Um if there's a concern about too many people in the chamber and now we're streaming meetings, why isn't it that we can't meet as a body? Um and still have the meetings streamed until such time as you feel we can all be in one room together. It just seems strange that everyone else is, you know, we're getting rid of QR codes, et cetera, you know, everywhere. Um and yet, you know, I I can have, be running a gym that's no, they're not much bigger than the chamber. And and I can have a couple of hundred people in there. I I I just, I just don't understand why we are still meeting this way. Thank you.
Yep, through, through the mayor, certainly take on board the the comments about having a essentially a blended type environment. Where councillors might be able to meet in the chamber but still live stream. Um we, the report that came to council a couple of minutes ago. Talked about us continuing to do an assessment on a real-time basis based on the risk. Um our COVID numbers in Wala currently at the. Our COVID numbers in Waila currently are the highest that they've actually ever been. So whilst some jurisdictions are relaxing their requirements, I'm still a little bit hesitant to start to relax the arrangements just at present. But I clearly understand the sentiment and the desire of councillors to be in the same room. So we'll revisit our risk assessment and maybe that hybrid model of having councillors attend in person and live stream might be a way to mitigate the risk. So happy to take that on board and we'll come back with some further advice on that, that matter.
Okay, thank you. Have you finished councillor Marshall?
No, I just had one really quick question, actually. I just realised. Now, just, just with record, just with the recording of these, because I know that we have to be very careful about how everything's timed, et cetera. I did notice that, Mayor, you had started your introduction about recording, et cetera. And, but on my screen, it said that recording started at 5:31 and I believe you started talking at 5:29. So, and, and I noticed that there were still visitors waiting in the waiting room. So I just wanted to bring that up because obviously we don't want anybody to sort of say, well, hang on, we started two minutes ago and, and we weren't in there. So just, just bringing that up with the timing. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think there was one person waiting in the waiting room and the timing on mine was at, yeah, it was. Yeah, so it's just obviously a slight delay with that, but we'll take that into account. Thank you. Councillor Knox?
I'd have an update, where we are with the RDA, yeah, peninsula, in regards to the money they're holding for Waila.
We plan to have a special meeting of council, probably as early as Monday of next week. And we've got two or three items on the agenda. That will be one of the items. So we have received further advice, which is subject to legal, legal privilege that will bring to council for information and as soon as potentially next week.
Councillor Simpson?
Do we have any free dump days planned for the period between now and the end of June? Is all my question is?
Yeah, so the question was councillor Simpson, do we have any free dump days between now and June?
That's correct. That was the question. Kristin?
Yeah, through the, through the mayor. The residents do receive a free hard rubbish pickup that can be arranged at any time and that is available to all residents. Separately to that though, I'm not aware of any free dump days that we have coming up. We did trial free dump days on Clean Up Australia Day, but they were almost so successful that we had kilometres of line up. Also noting that we no longer manage our own landfill and this would need to be arranged through the Viola Transfer Station. So the, the answer to the question councillor Simpson is that no, council does not have any free dump days coming up. But free hard rubbish pickup may be a substitute that people want to take advantage of.
Sorry, sorry, Bill. Yeah, sorry councillor Simpson, could I just get you to repeat that question? I had you on mute.
It's a potential for our media department to put the fact that we do free hard waste pickups on our Facebook page, please. It's not politicising enough, I don't think.
Yeah.
Okay, so councillor Simpson would like that to be advertised on our Facebook page, that particular service.
Yeah, that was service of the law.
Take that on board, Justin?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. We'll pick that one up.
Thank you. I don't see there are any other councillors wishing to ask a question. Oh, deputy mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, based on our discussions there about face-to-face meetings, I would earnestly hope the CEO and the staff can review the current situation because with all the meetings and workshops we've got coming up and budget over the next month, I'm much more comfortable face-to-face and I feel that, yes, we're doing this because we have to. But I do believe teams does create a barrier. And so I would earnestly hope that as soon as possible, we can come up with a system whereby we can at least meet in the chamber. Yes, we can live stream as we are to residents. And if staff and others have to meet in other rooms at the chamber, as we did when the COVID first hit and we were meeting, I would really urge to try to come up with that acceptable way of doing it. Because face-to-face at the moment, as I said, with what we've got to discuss is much better than we're doing at the moment.
Right, thank you. Any other questions, deputy mayor? Okay, so we'll take that on board and that obviously as the CEO has said, that will be reviewed and we will come back to the council. Thank you. So I don't believe there are any other questions from the councillors. Thank you. So we will go to motions without notice. I don't believe there are any handshakes, so there are none. Thank you. Okay, thank you. So now we will leave the, the public meeting and we will go into a confidential item, so 19.1.1. So I would ask for a councillor to move that recommendation, please. Do we go into confidence? Councillor Westerman, councillor Stupos has seconded that. Thank you. Show of hands. Thank you. Thank you, that's carried. So we'll just take a little moment now while the staff just arrange for this process to happen. And then once that confidential item has been dealt with, we will then come back into the, to the public meeting. Thank you, just wait. Thank you, councillors. Alrighty, thank you. Is everyone there? Yep. Excellent. So, thank you. So I can now advise that this meeting has been closed at 7:14pm. Thank you.